It's a board's pleasure, they can just elect a chair until Mr. Grillo arrives. He should be here in the next five minutes or so. But in the meantime, if the board does want to begin the meeting formally, certainly can do so. And we just need someone to make a motion to appoint a temporary chair until Mr. Grillo arrives.
I make the motion that Ms. Lusinski act as temporary chair until our vice chair arrives.
I second that motion. I don't think that might work.
We do a roll call for the temporary chair to appoint Ms. Lusinski until Mr. Grillo arrives.
Ms. Glassman? This is to approve the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Lusinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass.
Good evening, everybody. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975, C 231 S 1 amended in 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to extend on the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the new coaster on May 14th, 2024 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in administrative building Bolton Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on May 20th. Oh, I'm sorry, I just lost my spot. May 20th, 2024. Mission statement is the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character succeed in a diverse and global, evolving global society. Roll call please.
Ms. Lusinski, before we begin with the roll call, it's my understanding that Dr. Penna and Mr. Saunders are going to be joining us or would like to join us electronically by phone or otherwise. So to the extent that a motion needs to occur to allow them to do so, that also needs to occur.
Someone will make a motion to allow Dr. Penna and Mr. Saunders to attend virtually.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Dr. Penna and President Saunders to join this meeting electronically, virtually.
I second.
Roll call?
So this is a motion to allow Dr. Penna and Mr. Saunders to join electronically. Motion was made by... I'm sorry, who made the motion? Mr. Remy? And who was the second? Mr. Rogers. Okay. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Lusinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo, you walked in time for a vote on a motion to allow Dr. Penna and Mr. Saunders to participate electronically in this meeting. What is your vote?
Uh, yes. Sorry for my lateness.
Okay, motion passed.
Flag salute, everyone?
Flag salute?
All right, good evening, everybody. So let's do presentations first. So we have a couple of retirees, right? Who's going to go up and do it?
Tonight, we have several staff members that are retiring over several years of... got several years of working here in Asbury Park. And I want them to be recognized. So I'm going to have the principals recognize those staff members.
Who wants to go first?
Okay, good evening, everyone. For Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, we have quite a few. Ms. Karen Lee Schwartz, who is retiring with 21 years of service. Ms. Jan McLaren, who is retiring with 24 years of service. Mr. Kevin Williams, who is retiring with 24 years of service. And Mr. Barry Seaman, who is retiring with 26 years of service. Ms. Laura Grapaldi retiring with 26 years of service. Ms. Amanda Napolitani, who retired with 27 years of service. And Ms. Edwin Alanan, who retired with 27 years of service. Congratulations, CMES crew members.
Tabino, okay. For Bradley Elementary School, we had Ms. Megan Tabino with... 27? Am I saying 27? 20... 27? No, nothing on her. But I think, yeah, Ms. Tabino was 27 years of service. So thank you, Ms. Tabino.
Kyra Smith was the high school?
Ms. Kyra Smith with 27 years of service here at Asbury Park. How you doing, Ms. Smith? That's right, you earned that walk. Go ahead, all right.
I'm also an alumni.
That's right, okay, congra... that's what I'm talking about, congratulations. With 25 years of service, Mr. Petricelli. Who also served as a coach for many, many years. That's a big number. With 40 years, Mr. Kamis. Who has been a longstanding member of Asbury Park School District and community. Ms. Mia Jones with 27 years of experience. Ms. Eskridge, 26 years of service at Asbury Park School District. And rounding out our list of retirees, Ms. Carmen Williams-Davis with 26 years of experience. I'd like to say on behalf of the Apassas Association, truly a remarkable feat to serve that many years in any one place, yet alone a school district where we have so many challenges and obstacles. So I do commend you. You are an inspiration to all and to us. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something regarding the retirees. I think it's a feat to be in a school district or a job for that long time. I know several of you personally. Kyra, I know. Angel, I knew. I know also, and Karen. I did want to make a special note about Ms. Schwartz. If you see her in the community, she's always out there, talented. Talented individual. Singing, the instruments she plays. I think that if you get a chance to see her somewhere, please go and see her. What an asset to the music community.
Ms. Schwartz, did you want to say something? Ms. Schwartz, did you want to say something? Okay. I looked like you wanted to say something, that's all. I want to give you a moment.
I'm very grateful for the opportunity I had to serve the children of this wonderful district. My heart will always be here. And as Barbara says, "You will see me, you'll see me across America." I was only going to turn in my laptop today. I didn't want to let it go. So I will be here to help with some classes and programs, using the children, serving them as they may.
Awesome.
The wonderful joy to have a career in love, so not that I was actually losing it for 35 years. It wasn't half my life. And spending 25 years in a wonderful school that I had. It's really an enjoyable experience. It's been sweet and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's okay that you're turning your laptop, just don't turn in your saxophone. All right. And I think the principals have presentations as well, so. Orange state, thank you.
Good evening, once again. My name is Para Medina, principal of the middle school. I'd like to just talk to you guys very briefly about some of the success stories that we had this year. And I'll categorize them into two areas, climate and culture and instruction. Like with many things, the environment, the atmosphere really helps to motivate and control the success that we have. And I'm very proud that we were able to create two art galleries. And as you guys walked in, you may have noticed some of these student work in the foyer out there. Shout out to Ms. Jo Rosker, one of our dynamic art teachers in the school district. We also have Ms. Peterson in the building right now, another dynamic music teacher. She was responsible for conducting and delivering two music concerts. And the last one being a video game themed concert, which was awesome. Also, a big shout out to Ms. Angel Arias, who did a lot of the marketing for that. And I think Ms. Peterson, along with Ms. Rosker, were able to truly find what motivates students and use that to tap their skills and talents to produce what you see out there. We were able to conduct preschool dances, a couple of Battle of the Classes. We have a lot of success with our PBIS initiative this school year. Really figuring out at the middle school level how to create incentives that middle school students would respond to. Because as you know, they are too young to be adults and too old to be kids. They are stuck in the middle. And it was very challenging to find the things that really motivate them. But we had great success this school year with that. Also, I'd like to demonstrate that we created two unique active school clubs this school year. We had a photography club and an esports club. And we continued with some of our community partnerships with New Jersey Natural Gas, Wells Springs Boys and Girls Club, KYDS, and the list goes on. And I don't know when the last time we did this, but we were able to sustain bi-weekly town hall meetings run by our students this school year. So it was a point of pride for us at the middle school this year. And that climate and culture really led us into positive and lasting instructional progress. So we had a few students, not just one, two, three, but we had a few score, perfect scores on our Lincoln from B and C assessments. And since I've been here, I haven't seen that. So congratulations to those students. We've also demonstrated significant writing growth across each of the three grade levels on common writing assessments. So one of the goals was to improve where we started as a baseline, which wasn't very high. But out of a four-point rubric that is modeled after the state rubric, we were able to climb up to 3.1 from a 1.25 this year. So that was excellent for us. We also had an opportunity to take advantage of Teach Rock, which is a pretty innovative approach to teaching US history through music. They partnered with us this school year. We had a big old event, and it turned out to be a great success. And we are extending that to the high school this school year. We also, and I'm very, very happy about this part too, along with our climate and culture, this actually paved the way to introduce dynamic, individualized, professional learning opportunities for our teachers. So throughout hours and hours of data and analyzing, each teacher was able to kind of, you know, come together with me and some of the supervisors and devise instructional plans to increase their delivery in whatever content they teach. And that really went a long way. So when we start talking about those perfect scores on Lincoln, when we start talking about the writing growth, that's a testament to the teachers who really put a lot of effort into their practice. One of the things I'm extremely proud of, of the teachers in this district is, whatever is thrown at them, they respond. Thousands of hours of professional development this year. And it has paid dividends in our common assessments and benchmark assessments this school year. So congratulations to the staff of the middle school and also the students, obviously. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thea M. Jackson Byers, and I am the proud, 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 proud principal of the Bradley Elementary School. We have just some highlights that I'm going to talk about, was experience like toward the end of the year. We would be here all night long, so we just wanted to keep it short. So we completed the NJSLA testing for grades three through five. Our students participated in the CHIP, which is the Childhood Hunger Initiative Power Pack Participation. This is sponsored through the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Lambda Omega Mega Chapter. We have students that participated in that. We also have partnerships with resources, with the Boy Scouts of America, who came and did our PBSIS carnival. We had PBIS weekly readers. We had our reading buddies from the community. We had a Success Academy tutoring, which was done by our Unified Arts teachers. I read the weekly challenge, and we had winners. We had drop everything in right, because writing was our district initiative. We had weekly challenge and winners. We had a stick it to reading celebration. Students who read a certain amount of books, we had a celebration. We had our Scholastic Book Fair, Muffins with Moms Day Celebration, Third Market Period Awards Assembly, our Haitian Flag Day Parade. And we had our Haitian Flag Day Community Event, in which we had a student performance, spring concert, art showcase. We also had our Asbury Park High School Dream. 11 students come and they did tutoring for our students, which was really, really good. We had our Teacher Appreciation Luncheon, preschool through fifth grade field day, preschool bridge crossing ceremony and celebration, our kindergarten moving up ceremony and celebration. We had a senior walk, which was awesome. We celebrated with our seniors. The Juneteenth Community Event Student Performance. We had our Bradley students who performed at the Juneteenth event. We had a retired teacher clap out. And then we had our Donuts with Dad's Father's Day Celebration. And I must say, I think that our dads had felt some type of way about the mothers, muffins with moms. Because when I say our dads showed up and showed out, the line was wrapped around the building. So they made sure. I'm like, are y'all trying to... are y'all trying to embarrass the Mother's Day dessert? And they said, yes. So it was awesome. I just want to say that on behalf of the Bradley Elementary School staff and students, we want to say thank you to the board and the executive for all of your support. So we have a copy of our gift that we want to give to each of you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Lauren Schultz, the principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. And at Thurgood Marshall this school year, we were surely letting our light shine as we sailed to success. Sailing, standing forth, scaffolding to advance intentional learning. And some highlights to take away from Thurgood Marshall. We focused a lot on two very big building initiatives this year. The first, the creation of the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School Student Mentoring Program, where we paired fifth grade students with our first grade students to do in-school peer-to-peer mentoring. That was a very big success. We also kicked off our TMES Loves Reading Campaign in February with partnerships and sponsorships from the Asbury Book Cooperative, the Asbury Park Hyannis Club, our Reading Buddies, and the Bridge of Books Foundation. And that stemmed into our Read Across America Celebration, and also led to our two-time Scholastic Book Fair. That was a huge success, where we were actually able to utilize some of our SIA funds from our annual school plan to have all preschool through fifth grade students purchase texts to create at-home libraries. And again, that ties up our TMES Loves Reading Campaign. We were the proud recipient of a Sustainable Schools New Jersey Grant for composting. We have monthly Student of the Month recognitions with the principal. We're a proud participant with Bradley Elementary School, two of 16 schools in the state who were accepted to the Rutgers NJPVSIS program. So that was a year-long initiative as well. We had winter and spring vocal and instrumental concerts. Shout out to our dynamic music teacher, Ms. Schwartz. An African-American and the arts unit showcase. We had our Day of Autism Acceptance, our Mother's Day Special Women's Brunch. Thank you, Dr. Maksud, for being a Thurgood Marshall parent and participant. Our Haitian Heritage Celebration, where we kicked off the Haitian celebrations with a Thurgood Marshall Street Fair, complete with fresh mangoes served to all participants. We had our preschool through fifth grade field day. We were sponsored by AAA to implement a student safety patrol, which consisted of fourth and fifth graders. We have Girl Scouts of America. And we successfully completed NJSLA testing for all third through fifth grade students. And we also cultivated a partnership through Read Across America with Brookdale Community College, where all of our fifth grade students were actually treated to a college and career readiness scavenger hunt field trip in May that Brookdale fully sponsored. And they very much enjoyed that, especially the esports program. Still hearing about that from students over the summer. And of course, we ended the school year with our Father's Day Fun Day Field Day Celebration. And like Mrs. Jackson Byers said, the dads showed up and showed out, just like our moms did. And we celebrated all of our nine Thurgood Marshall Elementary School retirees. And of course, gave accolades to our Asbury Park High School seniors. So it was a fantastic year. And it has been nothing of a pleasure to serve Thurgood Marshall Elementary School the past three school years. I am the students and staff and families. Thank you so much.
All right. Hold on, hold on. Excuse me. Mr. Vice President, I would like to say a couple of things. One, I want to congratulate all the retirees that actually have gone through this district. I've been on the opposite side of that podium. I've talked about a lot of things. I've met with a lot of teachers. I've met with the principals. I've met with the kids. I feel that this district is impactfully changing. One of the words is used is climate and culture. I was at a council meeting, and we have to talk about different things as we go through our lives. But the most important thing is for this district to survive and thrive. We have to be united with the city. We have to be united with the people in it. We're going to have to have difficult conversations. We're going to have to have things that we need to address. As I said, I told the council, I think we have the best city in the state. I think we have the best school district in the state. I think it's us, an opportunity for us to show the rest of the state what we can do. And that, like I said, we're going to have difficult conversations. We're going to have difficult opportunities to meet. But no one should sit there and not speak up and be honest enough to have open conversations with everybody. So like I said, I want to thank everybody that's looking to join on, looking to make next year even better. Because I've seen some wonderful things. Mr. Medina, I want to thank you for inviting me. And Dr. Maksud was there. That was a great performance. And it was packed with parents. And I've come to many situations where I didn't see parents show up for their kids. They showed up. We have to make the opportunity to do more in this district and see where we're going. So like I said, I'm 100% it. I've always been 100% it. People need to stop being halfway in and get all the way in. Let's change this district and let everybody know that we have the best district in the state.
So with that, anyone else want to say anything? Okay. All right. Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Rogers said, we do need to do more together with the city. And we did send out a letter to the city to schedule a meeting, to see where we could find shared services. And that includes with the parks and playgrounds and things like that, the fields and playgrounds. So to be continued on that. So we should be hearing from them soon, so. So next up, we have the public hearing regarding the appointment for Mr. Marchabino as acting superintendent. There's an agenda item that has its... where we're going to vote on a one-year contract. So by law, we have to have a public hearing, so I'm opening that up now. If anyone wants to come to the microphone just to speak about the appointment of Marchabino as acting super for the 24-25 school year. Okay. Seeing none, I'm closing. Oh, we do. Oh, there we go. Sorry, I didn't see in the back, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Maybe out of a sense of, I guess, duty, I've had the honor of working under Mark Chapino when he was a principal. When he was a principal. And he was always about what was happening with the kids in the building. And even as coming on as a superintendent, he's had that same spirit. So I think that in light of what was said about our district being the best, I think that we should move, keep moving in that area and to have Mr. Marchabino to serve as the superintendent. I think he's only going to bring the right energy, the right attitude, and create the right climate for success, not only for the staff, but also for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, all.
Hi, Ms. Summerlin.
This is kind of emotional for me, because I actually go back years with Chapino in this district, because he actually had my son, which is the one I lost last year.
Take your time.
All I can say is, for the years that I've known you, dealt with you, interacted with you, abused you, tortured you, you have always been that one person in the district that I knew that no matter what it was, you always cared about our children first, as if they were your children. Just like I say to a lot of people, for the 35 years that I've been in this community and doing what I've done, it's hard for me to, you know, I claim everybody's kid, even though my kids have been in this district over the last eight years. But at the end of the day, just knowing you, knowing what I've dealt with, when it comes to my own children, dealing with you. And I just want to say, for you to be in the position that you're in, I know you're going to take our children very seriously, as if we would, because they're our children. And I also just want to say thank you. And moving forward, not just to him, but to the whole board, I'm still here. Patch, oxygen machine, and all, I'm still here. But I'm still always going to fight for children in this district to make sure that they get exactly what they deserve and need from Asbury Park. So yes, I'm going to be a pain in Chapino's bottom. He knows me. I love him, but I know you're actually going to do what's right for our babies. And that's what really counts for me. And I thank you.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Weiss. I have several questions regarding the document that I just saw, I guess, at the end of yesterday. I haven't had any... haven't had a chance to ask the questions. Can, I think maybe, I don't know if I should ask the questions in public or in executive session for the board votes? Because I don't know who prepared the contract and approved it before it went to the county suit, because I don't know of any meeting of the board prior to tonight, where the contract was reviewed and approved before it went to Dr. Richens.
So I can discuss that out here, because it's not really anything that is evaluative or otherwise with regard to Mr. Chapino's employment. So I will tell you that on the 18th... well, first, let me say this. The contract is 99.9% the same contract that Mr. Chapino is currently working under. The only change really is the salary. The contract was negotiated between Mr. Chapino's attorney and me. It was sent to Dr. Richens on the 18th of June. So I believe that was last Tuesday. I received it back from Dr. Richens, the county superintendent, on the evening of the 25th, I want to say. And that was approved by Dr. Richens at that time. So two days ago, it was approved by the county superintendent. You know, throughout the state, things vary county by county. Some county superintendents ask the boards to not approve the contracts until they're first approved by the county superintendent. I should say, most county superintendents that I deal with ask that of the boards, that the boards not consider it and not approve it until it's first approved by the county superintendent. That is the approach that we've taken since I've been here, since 2016. And that's the approach that we took with the current contract that's before the board this evening.
I tend to disagree. I've gone through several acting superintendents, and the board has always approved provisionally the contract. And then, not publicly, as an executive session, the total contract. And then it went to the county superintendent. I mean, we've had acting superintendents that were also... one, Dr. Gray was acting and the director of CNI with a stipend. There were several acting we had. I know there was some settlement issues with some sort of legalese that I don't want to ask questions about in public, but I'd like to get some answers before we vote. But I have never sat here without having the board in executive session raise their hand. hands and said, yes, we agree with a negotiated contract and let's send it to Dr. Richens before we approve it.
Hi, Ms. Lizinski, um, my recollection is different from yours. I've never done that here since I've been here, um, including Mr. Chabino's last acting superintendent contract, um, at which, if you'll recall, Dr. Richens, uh, came into executive session, reviewed the contract in person, and then it was approved by him literally at executive session, and then we came out into public and we voted. As it relates to Dr. Gray, um, I can tell you that, uh, 99.9% sure that we did not, um, have the board approve it before the county approved it. Um, trying to think, uh, for Dr. Adams, same, uh, we did not have the county, we had the county approve it before the board voted on it.
Well, voted, yes, I, I agree with that, but not discuss it at least.
Right.
And I disagree with you about Dr. Adam, I mean, Dr., uh, Mr. Chabino's acting contract. That was done without board approval unless five board members had a conversation about it prior to that meeting because I did no knowledge of that and other board members have no knowledge of that. So I, I, I don't want to have this conversation because it touches on things that I don't want to discuss in public and that's why I wanted to discuss it in executive session.
Ms. Lizinski, at the last.
No, 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 no. I.
Yeah, who is that? Oh, I got Dr. Penna.
Dr. Penna and then Ms. Glassman.
Uh, Ms. Medina, um, had you been present at most of our designated meetings currently? I know I'm not there now, but I, that's, having I walked out of our executive session, may, just may, you were not a part of all that. That's all I ask.
I, I've never insulted you in public and I take, um, I take offense to that, Dr. Penna, and I think that's totally inappropriate. And I had some questions about how the salary is going to be paid because there was litigation involved and whether our insurance coverage is doing this. It's a, it's a contract for a year. There's no stipulation about if, let's say, something happens and the board decides to bring the, Dr. Adams back, what happens to Mr. Chabino, whether the money gets paid anyway? There is nothing in that contract that, you know, says anything if the situation changes, which I think liability we should be discussing, but we don't want to go into executive session because everything's been decided before I come here.
Ms. Lizinski, we absolutely can go into executive session to discuss this. This is not, it's not an issue at all.
No.
No one said that, Ms. Lizinski.
Just a minute.
So I, 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 I'm gonna get to, so we're gonna just keep order. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna keep order.
Beginning to discuss.
We're gonna keep, we're not insulting her.
Yes, I just got insulted.
I, what, what we're doing is, what we're doing is, we're gonna go one by one if anyone wants to say anything, Ms. Glassman.
Again, I would just like to repeat again what Dr. Penna said. In the last executive session, we in fact discussed the terms of Mr. Chabino's contract. We also discussed some of the other issues that you were alluding to, Ms. Lizinski, but you had walked out of the room. So.
So somebody could have informed me.
But you don't come to any committee meetings.
I do, I, I can challenge anybody in this room on this board. In the past 16 years, I left early one meeting because I was being honored by school boards for being a board leader. That's why I left one meeting. The other meeting, I had us, my spouse was in the hospital and after being, some of this stuff being discussed in executive session, which blew my mind, I wanted to go home. So you can criticize me all you want, but ask me why I did it. And not one person here called me to see how she was. So stop it.
Go ahead, Ms. Ricks.
I don't want what I'm seeing Barbara is a duly elected.
Microphone.
Barbara is a duly elected board member, just as we all are. Why are we making her public enemy number one here because she disagree with you all and she feels that the process is not being followed and she has every right to do that, just as you have every right to express yourself. Do not, I will not sit here as a, as an elected board member and agree with you attacking her. I just won't, whether you agree with her or not.
Right now, we, we continue to go over this and I just had a discussion about us being involved and Ms. Lizinski wants to go into executive. I can't go in, uh, because of this matter, but I'll vote to, to take this into executive so they can discuss it. But, but some of the things that we have to remember, that let's not taking the personal into this, let's, let's, let's use facts, let's talk about what needs to get done and resolve it because we're sitting here in front of community, community members, staff, and for us not to show a direction and leadership in how we act. Now, we're gonna have different opinions, but let's, let's, let's be real about some facts when we talk about it. And if people don't want to have these facts displayed, then they have to understand what they're doing every day. And that's not, that's not what's been happening. The same communication that has to go one way should also go another. So if we want to get this thing over, let's have, let's, let's let them go into exec, talk about some of the issues, but we need to move this district ahead. And I'm not playing anymore because I will say things that will be fact and people are not gonna like. So let's get, let's get this stuff done. I'm really tired of, it's really, it's really becoming nonsense.
All right. So everyone's had their chance to say their piece. Um, Ms. Lizinski, just so you know, uh, I was gonna ask, that's what I was talking to Doc., uh, to, um, Mr. Weiss about, uh, just before, about when should we discuss going into public, uh, going into executive session? So, um, whether you believe that or not, that's, that's up to you, but that's, that was the next step. Right now, we're in a public hearing, so I want, we wanted to hear about, you know, from the public and if you can, a board discussion. So, um, public hearing is closed. Uh, I was gonna go to the reports of committee chairs, but if we want to go into executive session, we can do that.
I make a motion to go into executive session. A second.
Real call.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, we, we had, we had the public hearing.
No, that was for Mr. Chabino. We shall just say, we're just continuing, we could just go in public session all along.
Okay.
I mean.
No worries.
Session all along.
We're gonna skip to public participation and then go into executive session. Okay. So I vote yes on executive session after the public participation.
So you're canceling the first motion?
Yeah, I, I canceled the, uh, first motion.
All right. Um, in accordance with the board policy 0167, the Asbury Park School Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters or community interests. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence and, uh, group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. Uh, now open up public participation.
So, um.
Hey, Kevin.
Can you hear me? So, uh, my name is Kevin Strickland. I live right beyond the school here, 1109 Second Avenue. I coach Little League baseball, uh, I'm a member of the Kiwanis. I try to do things good for the community and I'm here to help. But I'm here also to make a request and I came here a couple of years ago and made the same request and that is to open the gates to the schools and the playgrounds so the kids can play. So I'm here to make that same request. So some things have happened, I guess, to try to, uh, maybe they were locked up again, right? But, uh, at this point, I'm asking that those gates be opened up again. And I did send an email out, I don't know if you guys have seen it, and I went through it in some detail, uh, and I said that I wasn't born here, that I got here as soon as I could, right? So, uh, the other thing, uh, that I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open up a, uh, a soccer program, particularly for girls, but it's probably gonna be open to all the kids. Uh, I talked to your, uh, athletic director and I looked online and what I found was the girls' soccer team didn't win one game and I thought that, that was distressing. But then I saw they didn't score one goal. And so I asked him, why do you think that is? And his answer was, we don't have a feeder program. So I'm gonna start a feeder program for Asbury Park. There's a couple of programs, I think the, uh, the town has a program, but there's no real bring the kids together program like Little League, like some of the other programs. So I'm gonna start that. But I need a place to practice and I need a place to have use. And so I'm asking you to provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening again. My name is Zena Summerlin and I am a resident of 1101 Bangs Avenue. And the last board meeting that I was at, I presented a question to Chabino and one to the board president. Um, he's not here, so I know I'm not gonna get the answer that I expected, but my answer goes back out to Chabino in regards to where do we stand going into this school year in regards to having students that we're paying for to go out of district and they're not our children? Have we rectified that problem? Have we been able to receive any of the money that we spent for those children? Um, where are we in that type of a situation right now going forward with this school year?
We are in a fight right now. I could tell you that. And, um, we're going through every avenue we can to rectify this. We've done our due diligence, but we need help from everyone and help from up top to rectify this issue, but we are aware of it and we are working on it, that I promise you.
What do you actually need from the community to get this addressed? That would be the question that might even go to the board president. What do you need from the community in order to fix this problem where we're spending excessive money for children to go to, to go out of district and a lot of these kids are not our children? So that means those children that we're paying for, they're taking money from our school district and that has to stop.
You need to call your legislators. That's where it needs to go, unfortunately.
Okay, well, then that's what I'm saying. Here at the board meeting, like I said, if I have a question and I can't get an answer at that board meeting, I will give you time to find the answers and then I'm coming to get the answer. Now, if there's something that you need from the community as stakeholders, then that's something that you might want to reach out to like now and say to the stakeholders, this is what we need from you guys in order to fix a lot of the issues that we're dealing with when it comes to money being removed from our district for no reason. So I thank you for my answer and I'll be back next month to see where we are, how far we've gotten, to make sure that, you know, we are reaching out to our, our legislators, asking for help, to say this has something that has to stop. Cause at the rate we're going right now, we're losing way more money in this district than we should have to. So I'm asking board members, reach out to some of the parents in the community that you know and have those needed conversations, asking them to write these letters to legislation. Thank you.
Ms. Summerlin, uh, if you want, I, I can give you the contact info for the legislators. I think you have them, but just in case. All right. I just make sure. I love you. Absolutely. Okay, I know you do.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Milagro Gomez. I am working in our community present about education. I just came back with some information about the situation with our children who are attending, um, charter schools and how, and how no one knows where the funding has been going for the students.
Can you speak up a little bit, ma'am?
I am.
Keep them in my ground, like, right.
Also, currently they're attending charter schools and no one knows where the funding is going. Where are the, where, right, no one knows where the money is going. Furthermore, matter is being worked on by Senator Ben Gopau, Assemblyman at this moment on behalf of this. They are currently working on getting more funding for the district here in Asbury Park. I spoke to the chief of staff there and I wanted to let you know that you keep doing what you're doing and keep plugging it out and stay strong. It's gonna be a battle, but it's gonna happen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Myrtle Jones. Uh, I live, I've been living in Asbury Park now for 47 years, right on this block here. And I have a, uh, a second grader that is now going to the third grade. She's been diagnosed with ADHD and she's a lot and she attends this school. This year, last year was rough, this year was rough. Um, she was in a class this year that started out with, I think it might've been 14 children. It ended up having 26 children, which made life very miserable for me. I need to understand why and what's gonna be done so this doesn't happen. She cannot be in a class with 26 children and only two teachers. Okay, she was sent home often, uh, she was taken out of class often. There was gaps in her learning because of this and it makes no logical sense to me why you would have children with special needs in such a large group. They need specialized attention. This gentleman right here made a statement about the school and the, the school and the city being in tune with one another to make it better. When she was, uh, five, she was put out of the summer camp after only been, being in there like two days or three days. I contacted everybody at the city, had a situ, sit down with a lawyer and all of that stuff for what I needed. And all I needed was more direction on what to do with this special child. She was tossed away with no direction, nowhere to go, and I don't think it's fair. I pay my taxes just like everybody else and that camp was afforded all children in this community, but minds couldn't go. And that's unfair. Not even a recommendation of something else. When I looked into where I could take her, I had come up with $3,000 in order to take her to a specialized camp that deal with children with ADHD. It's unfair. This is something you guys need to put on your list of things to do and things to consider. There are many children in this school with special needs. Some parents can afford to put their kids in those $3,000 camps. At this time in my life, I can't. I'm a senior care, you know, and I can't afford that anymore. I did pull my kids out of here when they were younger because I didn't like what was going on. But back then, I could afford to put them in a private setting. At this point, I have this one child and I can't afford it. So I need the community and the school to help me. I will attend, I start out and then I fall back, but I will be attending. She's going to the third grade, so I need her to be able to have a good school year. I'm doing all what I have to do at home, the psychiatrist, the medication, the counseling, I'm doing all of that. You know what one of the doctors say to school that would help you with your. So that's what I need and that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could, set up a meeting, uh, contact me at central office and we'll set a meeting up with the staff, child study team and, and the principal to, you know, listen to what, what was going on and we can rectify that problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lyons and I'm a resident here on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. And I'm having mixed emotions, but I'll try to be clear. To piggyback on this, dear residents' concern, I attended a, uh, CPAG meeting at Thurgood Marshall, very informative. And the concern and the need that this parent has or guardian has, I have in my possession a reference guide from Monmouth County, 2024, 2025 Guide to Child and Youth Services, not DIFIS. And within this guide, it directs the families, the parents, the guardians, to the agencies that are available in Monmouth County. Let me go back. I thank all of you for doing what you've been doing. I appreciate your call on your life to teach and to reach our children. Thank you for representing our community. We put you in your place. So we're trusting that you'll follow the call of transparency. I heard that many years ago, but it's happening in small stages, but it's happening. So in regards to my bringing up this reference guard, a guide, I'm asking or maybe igniting thoughts about when a family is called in for an IEP meeting or classification meeting with that child and family? Is it possible that a representative from one of these agencies could be available? I don't know if that's legal or not, but if they could be available to say, these are the agency we have in place to help you along with the school. I, it may be a legal matter, I don't know, but I just want to throw it out there to consider that when the family comes in and they meet with these child. and they meet with the child study team, this would be an addition to say, you have what the school is offering, but we are in place to pick up, to help you in this journey with your child. So I thank you again for the opportunity to, to share that. Also, one more thing and I'll sit down. In, on, or in our agenda, you do list the committees. If it's possible to just give a little blob or a sentence or two about what the committee has accomplished or what they're working on. A lo, when I read the agenda, I know that it's true, you do give your reports. But for those of us who are not able to attend the meetings or they're watching it on television and a lot of times our audio isn't too good. So if we had it printed along with the committees, what they're trying to do, yes me?
Sorry, time is up.
Oh, thank you, okay, just those thoughts, thank you very much.
Really quick ma'am, um.
Ms. Lyons, before you sit down, I just wanna address one thing that you, um, that you brought up, uh, specifically with regard to your question of whether or not parents can bring in, um, individuals that are associated with Monmouth County. Parents are permitted to bring in any individual who has any type of knowledge of the student. So that could really be anybody. Additionally, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that you went to a CPAG meeting, but for your own edification, uh, you may also wanna take a look at the parental rights in special education booklet, because that too has a lot of information as it relates to what the district is required to offer students and the parents' rights to, with regard to challenging the district's determinations and things like that. So as a community member who's vocal and out there and informative to others, I think it would be well for you and the people that you come in touch with, if you have some familiarity with that as well, because, you know, you're the one that can shepherd people, um, al- along. So I appreciate your, your, your involvement and all that. And I just, um, wanted to answer your question so that you could walk away here with an answer.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And also one more thing, that packet you have is being mailed to parents in August.
All right, sharing that, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Brown, is, is it possible to, we, cause we get the minutes of, of the committee meetings. Um, is it worth it to, um, to put it up, either post it up or make copies even for the public over here? Thank you, Ms. Lyons, that's a, that's a great idea, appreciate it. Go ahead.
Oh, hey, Liz Homer, West Long Branch, New Jersey. I'm a paraprofessional in, well, I'll be here in Bradley. Um, sometimes I forget, cause I've been everywhere, but anyway. Um, good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Dabino. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board for approving the attendance for myself and three other educators to attend the annual New Jersey Sustainability Summit at Bellworks and Home Del on May third. It was awesome, we got the chance to hang out with Mr. Grillo. Uh, we learned a lot about how to get our district to become a New Jersey certified sustainable school. I am super excited about this, as he knows, I was going on and on. My dad was an environmentalist, so I kinda got my passion from him. Um, it's important for our schools, our staff and our students to learn about sustainability, especially our students in hands-on, real-time experiences. And it's important for our earth. My dad was an environmentalist, like I said, so I'll be bringing my passion to this team. And I'll also be bringing updates to the board every month on what's going on in the schools. So I just wanted to thank everybody that approved this, it was awesome. I'm excited about it and I expect and hope to get full help from staff, principals, building and grounds and Mr. Dabino, so we can do something positive for our school. Thank you so much.
Just, uh, Ms. Brown, um, I know a couple of years ago, I wasn't, I wasn't on the board and we had some environmental changes and structures that we were saving money. Could you provide us with some of the savings that we accumulated from those uh?
From the solar.
With the solar, yeah, can, uh, to tell us what we, you know, it's not a big rest. I, I came across it with another district and I just wanted to know, I wasn't on the board at the time.
Hello, can you guys hear me? My name is Kalen Vido and I've been with the district for twenty-nine years. I'm a ESL bilingual Haitian Creole teacher. Um, where do I start? I'm here tonight to talk to the acting superintendent, Mr. Dabino. In each school, they have a bilingual Haitian Creole teacher and a bilingual Spanish, um, teacher. I'm the only one that has been moved from Thurgood to Bradley. The last time that I was here, I spoke on behalf of Ms. Jackson. And I did state that when you open your mouth in this district and you say something, there's a target on your back, I'm hoping it's not that. But in my department, I'm the only one that has been moved and there's no Haitian Creole teacher at Thurgood. And it's not because we have more, and we already have a Haitian Creole teacher at Bradley. Why do we need two Haitian Creole teachers at Bradley and then Thurgood Marshall has none? I would love to have a response for that if it's possible.
If you want to schedule a meeting, I will absolutely have that response. But there is no target on your back, let me, let me finish, there's no target on your back. We don't have the time in this district to put a target on people's backs. We got too much work to do to move this place forward. So absolutely no target on anybody's back, just moving this place forward right now.
The reason I say that, because you were at one of our staff meeting and you used me as an example. You said it and I'll quote, Ms. Vido, I worked with you when I was a teacher under, you know, you were under me as a principal. I will never move you from one subject to another, from one thing to another. You did say that. So therefore, if you did say that and I took your words for that and we were at the meeting, it was a public meeting, staff meeting, and if you say that and then you turn around and moved me, then it makes me believe there's some things going on. And it's not like we have more Haitian students at Bradley, we don't, because I have the numbers.
That's not my recollection, recollection of that meeting I had with the staff. But that's, but you, your recollection, recollection is, I understand that. But again, I'm not targeting anyone, so if you wanna sit down and talk, absolutely.
Absolutely, we'll talk, because we, we have passed, Mr. Dabino, and you know and I know. So it's, it's my recollection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am Ms. Schwartz and I speak for the band. Right on the logs, I speak for the trees. I am here to advocate for our music programs. As you know, I was the high school band director for fourteen years. How many of you know that I'm the only band director that got tenured since Dorian Periot retired in nineteen ninety? No other music teacher got tenured as band director. We are in a town that says where music lives. I see people walking around with T-shirts, music saved Asbury Park. Who is going to save the high school band? My heart was broken last year when I watched the graduation ceremony online and I saw not even the alma mater performed at graduation. Even though I sent a recording, I was contacted by senior advisors for the words, the music. It to me is unacceptable that a first-year principal was allowed to dismiss a perfectly competent band director that we had in George Margy. Yes, he was outspoken, maybe inappropriately at times, I wasn't there, but he was doing an excellent job, took kids out to March two weeks after he was hired, volunteered to have music at last year's graduation in March and was told, no, we don't need it. Okay, you're talking, looking at someone who was told the band was not needed at a pep rally, which was the beginning of the end for me, which is why I chose to leave the band position that I loved for fourteen years, cause the band was no longer being supported. We are the only school maybe in America, public school, that does not start instrumental music in fourth grade. Neptune next door starts in third grade. I teach those children privately. We partnered with a community, uh, school that I do not wanna disparage or say their name, but after five years of this partnership and many, many thousands of dollars spent, which could have been spent on an additional music teacher salary, over fifty-five thousand dollars in consulting fees in their first year and we have not seen one trumpet or trombone or saxophone or clarinet as a result of that community partnership. Ms. Patterson has been doing two people's jobs for years now. Every middle school in America has two music teachers, a vocal, a general music teacher and a band director. She's doing it all by herself and we're not starting our children early enough. And I'm hearing people say they're not interested and that is not true. How can we be interested in something they have not been offered? I gave kids clarinets and trumpets and elementary this year alone. I had kids come to me with their own clarinet fingering chart, tagging to learn the clarinet.
Time's up, Ms. Schwartz.
My time is not up, I'm timing myself, okay? And someone can use their three minutes if anyone would like to. This is too important, we have no high school band, we should be embarrassed. What are we doing? You have to start band in elementary school, you have to hire more music teachers and stop letting our positions atrophy, which is how I ended up in elementary, because instead of replacing me, you gave me two people's job and I said, no, thank you. Please fix this situation, please pay attention to our music program. To not have a high school band in Asbury Park is unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
I'm mad Kevin left, cause I'm gonna be the soccer coach, um, for women's team, girls. Uh, I'm Jean Grossman, I live over at Sunset Drive. Uh, I've been to a few meetings between HOA and, uh, some board meetings, uh, been in Asbury since twenty twelve. And, uh, I keep hearing this plan, which I'm not pretty to and I don't wanna be, I appreciate everything you guys are doing, but the pa, uh, the plan to increase the student body of Asbury Park. And, um, very eloquently went through your whole plan at the HOA meeting, which was awesome to understand. But as I look at the real estate of Asbury and who's buying and who's moving in, they're not bringing kids, they're not bringing kids of school age and the, you know, we, we don't have kids coming to Asbury Park. So I'm, I'm like a little bit analytical and I like to know the numbers. Like I just kept asking how many kids, how many kids, how many kids with everything we talked about today. I'm all for music and art and sports, I think, uh, sports saved me. Probably wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for athletics, just to be completely honest. But as we look at, that was three minutes? As we look at, as we look at the real, the real estate turnover, I'm very concerned, cause the math frankly doesn't work. When you think about quadrupling the student body of Asbury Park or even, you know, five timesing it, we don't have people moving in here that are bringing kids to increase the student body. So statement, not a question, just a perspective. And, um, you know, I look at, I'm, I'm super crazy, I look at real estate every day. Um, so I, um, I'd be more than happy to understand how we're gonna quadruple the, uh, student body of Asbury.
Thank you, Jean. Anyone else? Okay, I'm, oh. Yes, I see your hand.
Good evening, I sat over there and I said, hmm, should I speak to them or should I just be quiet? Should I go away quietly or should I just, you know? I decided not to go away quietly. I decided not to go away quietly, because this year I had the pleasure and you all gave it to me of going to Asbury Park High School. And eventually I worked with the Pathways students. These students aren't lazy, can they be uninspired? Yes, but the time I spent with those students was phenomenal. As the days came that it was time for me to leave, one of the students said to me, Ms. Smith, why are you leaving us? And I said to him, don't think of it as leaving, think of it as seasons change. And my season has changed. And then I went on to give him my phone number, the whole class took it. Translation, I've given Asbury Park my whole life. I'm born, bred and raised here. I have two aunts that are retirees of Asbury Park School District. My mother was a former board member of the Asbury Park School District and she also served on every PTO in Asbury Park. Asbury Park ha, has my heart, I love them. And although I'm moving, if they call me, I'm coming back. So I wish you all well, I know that the job you have ahead of yourselves is not easy. Mr. Dabino, you already know my number, you know where to find me if you need me. I am his prayer covering and I'm telling you all now, my prayer, my deepest prayer is that you all would see the faces of our children and do right by them. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, has the spirit moved anyone else to speak? All right, I'm closing public session. Thank you everybody for your comments and they're not going unheard, by the way.
Mr. Grillo, I have to read the public emails from residents.
I'm reopening public session. Right, right, I'm kidding, go ahead, you can read them.
Uh, dear members of the Board of Education, I am writing to request that you unlock the school playgrounds and soccer fields. Children of all ages need places to play, they are also places to build community. Opening the playground, playgrounds encourages families in the area to meet and spend time together. It helps to socialize the kids and give, gives a destination to families who might not want to have to travel to the waterfront to deal with the summer crowds. If you are concerned about teenagers causing damage to the field, they would not. They would feel ownership of the space because they love the sport. Not only does it benefit their health, but it also uplifts their culture. Those teens often include my small children in their play as well. Please consider making these areas accessible to all and show some trust in your people to maintain the shared community spaces. Thank you for your consideration, Seraphina Mugaberu and Scott Lennox, eleven fourteen Fourth Avenue. To whom it may concern, here in the northwest section of our great and historic city, there is not one public playground for children, not one, how could this be? Playground are meant to be public spaces for children of the area to experience exercise, spend time outdoors and interact with others. As a healthcare professional, I can testify that these are all requirements for children to grow up healthy. Where the city of Asbury Park fails in bringing this needed recreation to children and our city of the city, the Board of Education can easily help bring this to our kids. You have the facilities, please just unlock them so our kids can play like they need to. Thank you, Randy Frutcher, eleven twenty-five First Avenue. To whom it may concern, in the northwest section of Asbury Park, there is not one public playground for children. Yep, none, why? This frustrates and baffles me daily, since I have a young, only child who has a few friends in this town and nowhere nearby to play outside other than our fenced-in backyard. We all know playgrounds are supposed to be public spaces for children to exercise, be outside and socialize. My child could certainly use more of that, yet here, yet here we are playgroundless. The AP Board of Education can easily help right this failure of the city of Asbury Park by unlocking public school playgrounds so our kids can play like they need to. Please help us open the gates, thank you, Ellen Browdy, full-time resident of eleven twenty-five First Avenue. Dear members of the Asbury Park Board of Education and City Council, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing to express my concern regarding the current state of our town's playgrounds and sports fields, which remain unlocked and inaccessible after school hours and during the summer. This situation is not only disappointing, but also detrimental to the well-being and development of our children. It is disheartening to see these valuable public spaces, which are intended for the enjoyment and benefit of our community's youth, being underutilized. Children need safe and accessible areas for physical activity, social interaction and recreation. Preventing access to these facilities during appropriate hours from sunrise to sunset undermines their purpose and the investment made by the town in maintaining these spaces. While I understand there have been resident complaints regarding the use of these facilities, I believe it is essential to prioritize the needs and interests of our children. Residents who choose to live near public spaces must acknowledge and accept that these areas are meant to be used by the community, especially by our younger generation. The benefits of having accessible recreational spaces far outweigh the inconvenience caused by their usage. Additionally, I would like to voice my strong support for the construction of a playground in Sunset Park. It is unacceptable that there has been minimal progress on this project despite the allocation of funds through a participatory budgeting exercise. This playground is a much-needed addition to our community and the delay in this, in its development is disappointing to many residents who supported and voted for this initiative. I urge the Board of Education to take immediate action to ensh, ensure that our playgrounds and sport fields are accessible during appropriate hours and call on the City Council to expedite the development of the playground in Sunset Park. Our children deserve safe and engaging spaces to play, grow and thrive. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Jenna Bustman Wise, five oh two Fifth Avenue. Hello, Asbury Park Board of Education members, this is Kevin Strickland. This is Kevin Strickland. This is the gentleman that was here, that he said that he sent the email. Yes, this is him that said about the soccer, that he wants to start the girl soccer program. Hi, Asbury Park Board members. I'm writing to you in regards to opening up the locked playgrounds and fields for the kids of Asbury Park. We have lived in Asbury Park for eight years now and I am still confused on why these playgrounds and fields are closed to the kids. I have lived and has lived during my childhood days and tittenfalls for my children for, with my children for over thirty years. And none of their fields or playgrounds were ever closed to the kids. It's hard to explain now to my grandchildren why the playgrounds and fields are not open for them to play in. I watch them every Monday and Tuesday and they ask if we can take a walk past the playgrounds just in case it's open so they can play. It's heartbreaking, it's har- heartbreaking. Wouldn't you rather have the kids playing on the fields than just walking the streets? Thank you, Patty Strickland, 1109 Second Avenue. Dear members of the Board of Education, I'm writing to request that the school playgrounds within our district be unlocked for children's use during non-school hours. As a parent of a teenager and a community member, I believe opening these facilities would benefit and have a positive impact on on the community. Playground are essential spaces for our children. My son plays soccer and the Bradley School is right behind our house. He has not been able to use this space to practice or play with friends and/or local kids because it is locked. On the one occasion that he found it open, an adult from the school asked him to leave. In a time when children and teenagers are becoming too dependent on screens, school grounds should be an open, safe place for them to get physical activity, make friends and have social interaction and get exercise. These playgrounds are funded with taxpayer dollars and should be accessible throughout the year. I kindly urge the Board of Education to review the current policy regarding playground access to consider implementing a plan that allows for unlocked access during non-school hours. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Ellen McVeddy, Fourth Avenue. That's a duplicate. I'm writing to add my voice to the petition for the unlocking of the playgrounds outside of school hours. Parents with school-aged children who live west of Main Street don't have amenity, amenities that those who live near the boardwalk do. We do not have a public gathering space, AKA a third space north of Asbury Avenue. A third space is an area where people can gather and socialize without the expectation of spending money. It's crucial for community building and maintaining. In the least, it will strengthen the famili- familiarity of the families whose children attend Asbury Park Schools. But I believe the benefits of unlocking the playground will even greater, will be even greater than that. I'd be happy to expound further on that if necessary. Thank you for your consideration, Melanie Chambola Nestor. Asbury Park Board of Education members, my daughter has a dear friend who is eight years old and lives in an apartment in Asbury Park where she has no access to the outdoors. Her parents work several jobs and are often not at home. Her fifteen-year-old brother takes care of her and their younger sister and they aren't allowed to venture far from where they live. This is just one of the many examples of Asbury Park kids who need a nearby and familiar space where they can play and socialize with others. It makes me so sad to see Asbury Park's playgrounds locked and to think of all the children and families who would benefit from neighborhood playgrounds. If you unlock the playgrounds, I will coordinate a team of parents, residents and Kiwanis volunteers to act as a neighborhood watch team for the playgrounds for the rest of the summer. Combination locks can be put on the gates and they can be unlocked by a, by an adult volunteer every morning and locked again every evening by another volunteer. These same adults will also be in charge of scanning the playgrounds for any garbage or other items. We will also need to be aware of the school schedule for summer enrichment and summer recreation and make sure that the playgrounds aren't accessible to the public during those times. This won't be a simple task, but I guarantee that people will step up to the job. Please don't leave these playgrounds unlocked any longer. Kids only, get one chance of childhood. Let's make it the best we can for them. Regards, Kerry Martin, Second Avenue.
That it?
Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. I wasn't understanding anything, but I keep hearing about the playgrounds being open on the Asbury Park School District property. Are these parents, there's nothing wrong with wanting to have a playground for your child to go, but isn't that the question? Should we go into the city instead of the Board of Education? And if you open the pa- the playgrounds and unlock everything, are the parents gonna be reliable, have life insurance? I mean, insurance? If there's something happen to their child on school property, are they gonna come back and try to sue the district? I mean, I understand what they, they want their child to go out and play. Let him, let him read a book. I mean, I'm just being facetious and crazy, but really, seriously. I think that's a conversation that they need to send to the city about getting public playgrounds because it's not the school board's problem or responsibility. And we have playgrounds for, that's on school property. So if something happen on school property and if you open these playgrounds, who go, who's gonna be liable for that or responsible? That's a question. So I think we need to, I guess, get a, uh, community together, try to do some fundraising. As a community, the school board, the city, the parents and everybody, and try to get some playgrounds done. There's some grant money out there, somebody to look into it. Who's our grant writer for the district, uh, for the city? Maybe we all need to hook up. That's my response for tonight. God bless y'all, be safe.
Thank you. Uh, I think, Ms. Remy, you're gonna uh, talk a little bit about this during the, the, the committee reports, right?
Yes. Hi, how are you? Um, I was one, the last time.
Uh, your name and your address.
Oh, my name's Linda Lupino and I live at 1115, 1115 Second Avenue, next to the soccer field.
And hold the microphone close to you.
Oh, okay. Um, and while I've been here a couple of times and I understand that a lot of people would like to see the field open and I am the neighbor that complains about everything that's been breaking and, and the noise, et cetera, et cetera. But more than that, it's the safety and it's the liability of exactly what this nice woman just talked about. Um, and the liability is the Board of Education currently and me, as far as I'm concerned. Because when they come over the fence, which the kids do, we're just waiting for somebody to get hurt. And I don't want that to happen, so that really worries me. The fact that the fields are locked doesn't really excite me either. I would love to be able to go out and play with my grandchildren there as well. But I, I'm not sure what the, um, how to make that happen, really. And the last we spoke, you were going to have a conversation, Mr. Jirbino, with um, the community leader from the police department and find out how you guys could work together because this is school property, it's not public property, right? So I was wondering if anything had come of that. And while we have uh, made some progress, um, I don't think we've made a hu- a great progress, but I think it's better than it was. And I do thin- know that the kids are going down to the high school, at least the bigger, bigger ones are and, and that is much appreciated. And I would love to see the school open and I would love to see a um, a soccer team and, and supervised, which is something that I had mentioned before. I'd be happy to volunteer and help in doing those things. I too will open and unlock the, the gate. I live right there, I'd be very happy to help. But we should have some parameters around that. Is it, is it, is there a, an age group that should be there? Or should we have adults playing there? Like when I just came in, there was twenty-five kids that drove their car here to play and they're suppo- still probably out there. So is that what it's for? Or shouldn't they be down at the high school at something bigger, more appropriate for them versus smaller? Or whether it be the playground here where I could take my granddaughter and play? I could do that during the day, but I don't think I need to do that at eight o'clock at night or eight o'clock in the morning. So I was wondering if you got anywhere, if there was any more progress made between you and the city? And I say you, but I mean the Board of Education and the city, um, on that matter. And I guess you're not gonna answer me now, but I can come back next month for an answer?
No, we're s- it, it's all still in progress. Even everything else that we talked about when you were, when you came to the board office. So those are all things that are still being looked at, um, and some of it is.
I didn't know about this until then and that I wasn't gonna come to make a big deal. It seems like everybody's celebrating and, and there's some controversy and this seems a little silly to end with, but I didn't know we were gonna read fifteen, eighteen letters. I thought there were gonna be eighteen people behind me, so I thought they're, um, prepared.
Well, we have to, if someone sends an email in.
No, I understand, and I just.
No, you have a right to get up.
We have, um, to make some parameters and, and be happy to help with that in any way I can.
Yes, and you've been patient, so thank you. All right, thank you. Now we are closing public participation. I don't care who gets up, you're not speaking. Thank you. Go on, go on Facebook like everybody else. Um, okay, so we did public participation. Um, we wanna do report of the committee chairs now and then um, we'll, we'll go into executive session. But we'll have to vote on it again, so. All right, so let's do the reports of the committee chairs. We'll start with uh, finance, uh, Ms. Glassman. And also because Mr. Penna, uh, Dr. Penna is, we won't be able to hear him that well. Um, if, if you could also do curriculum.
So the finance committee continues to meet weekly with Acting Superintendent Jirbino in an effort to deal with the difficulties that we face because of the eight million dollar loss in funding this year alone. We did receive one point eight million dollars uh, back from the four point one that we lost due, um, as a result of the efforts of Senator Gopal and Assemblywoman Donlin and Peter Paul. And we thank them for that and they are also working to get us some other grant money. Um, unfortunately, of that one point eight million dollars, close to nine hundred thousand dollars will have to be paid over to the charter schools. Um, we've been going through the budget, we've been going through the transformational program that is going to allow for both um, an, an economical uh, curriculum and educational program as well as a transformational educational program. So that the kids of Asbury Park are educated. Towards that, we are continuing to fight the charter schools, specifically College Achieve, for its failure to cooperate with us and provide documentation on the residency of its students. Because every dollar that goes to College Achieve is money that is lost for the funding of the educational programs for our kids, including arts, sports, um, and teacher programs. So we are taking this very aggressively. We have asked for cooperation from College Achieve. They have provided no cooperation. Um, Ivy Brown, uh, and some other staff members have gone to College Achieve to help get documentation on the residencies and they have not been cooperative. Her report to us after her visit last week showed that um, only forty-five new verifications were obtained. Uh, we only have verification of a hundred ninety-four out of two hundred and seventy-four students that College Achieve claims lives in Asbury Park. Um, we will not accept this, we will not accept this going forward. And in, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, the superintendent is going to specify very specific procedures that must be complied with in our schools in advance of the school year before we are willing to pay any money over to any of the charter schools. This money belong, is your, is your money and it belongs to educate our children. Um, so this project is taking um, a lot of our time. We continue to try to set up meetings with the Commissioner of Education. We have gotten no support from the Commissioner and we've gotten little support from uh, the county superintendent. But we will continue to fight this, um, all the avenues that we have. In turn, we've discussed operational expenses and through the RFPs and discussions that we've had, we've been able to end up with a net reduction in some of the expenses for things like landscaping, um, uh, garbage pickup. And we will continue to discuss this, uh, as we've mentioned, uh, with the city for shared services and other opportunities, um, to lower expenses. I think those are, those are the main things at, at, at the finance committee. You've heard earlier from Mr. Madina and a couple of the other, um, presenters, the programs that were discussed at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, um, including a application for a grant on, from the National Endowment of the Arts, which will be submitted uh, in mid-July. It's a grant up to a hundred thousand dollars and the staff is working on the contours of the program that they'll submit. Um, we've had a couple of meetings, just so everyone knows, we've had a couple of meetings with some arts organizations that are willing to volunteer their services and mentor our kids and bring some uh, arts programming into the school with grant funding at no expense to the district. Um. So, um. We approved, uh, again, the Teach Rock Program, the Harmony Program, that was very successful this spring. And again, we discussed the program, the history program, which is a pilot program that'll be coming into the high school. Um, we recommended out a, a partnership with Mercy Center for support programming for students and, and teachers through the Community Cares Program. Um, we approved a continuation of the um, school-based healthcare solutions network, which is a discretionary grant to the school district, um, for under-resourced uh, school districts. We also approved a partnership with Preferred Behavioral Health of New Jersey, um, School Great Youth Program, starting July uh, first, twenty twenty-four, running through uh, twenty twenty-five at the high school. It's a program that's operated within the school and works with um, community resources. All, all youth are eligible to participate. Services are provided both during and after school. And it's designed to help strengthen uh, our youth so that they have a better chance of success. Let's see if they were hanging. Okay, I think those were the programs that we discussed at curriculum.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, buildings and grounds, Mr. Remy?
All right, um, buildings and grounds met on June twentieth. Um, we discussed a few topics very, real quick. I'll just run through them. Uh, we just got central office move, um, the week of June twenty-fourth, which is this week. Movers started moving, um, central office staff over to MLK. They will be staffed on a, the staff will be on the first floor of MLK. We also talked about the soccer field, um, so update with that. I know everyone has a lot of questions and concerns and ideas and trust me, I was one of those people. But there is a lot that goes into it. It's not just, you know, I'll get the key and I'll do it since I live right here, I can do it. It's, it's nice, it's very nice, but it's so much that goes into it. Um, you know, there's other people who don't use the, you know, the facilities to do what they're used for, what they're supposed to be used for, so other things happen. Um, so right now, the gates will be closing at six at the soccer field. Um, and it also takes a lot of our budget to pay staff to come and clean after and, you know, make sure that it's proper for when children come to play and have a good time that is presentable for them. The high school field is open right now, so you can play there. I know it's, it's not the same, but the field is bigger. You can go there, you know, have a good time, but be respectful. Use the field for what its intended purposes are for. And we also talked about, um, next year is a hundredth year celebration of Asbury Park High School. Yeah. And um, last of all news, um, so given any SDA monies, um, we talked about fixing the high school, uh, bathrooms. You know, so any money that we get, or we're trying to, you know, figure out a plan that it goes back into our district, into our children and do the right thing by it. And that's buildings and grounds, thank you. All right.
Hold on, Ms. Grillo. I gotta, there's one more thing, building grounds, it just happened this week. We did have a leak at, uh, Thurgood Marshall Elementary School and right now that is being mediated. So that school for now is, is not, is closed to students, staff and students? And hopefully we get it open by, uh, August. We had a leak on the third floor that came all the way down to the first floor, so it's gonna take some time, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I had a question. Uh, Mr. Remy, have you been discussing the structure of the stadium at all? And it's a condition of disrepair that needs to be taken care of?
No, we did not, but that's a good question. Um, we'll definitely discuss that and we'll start seeing what our, um, options are. But thank you for that.
And, uh, if I may, just so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel, uh, on that. Um, I know that Mr. Hastings, when he was here, was working with our former architects on that, but that is an issue that I know was looked into and probably there's been a little bit of time now since Mr. Hastings' departure. I would imagine that it might be ripe again for review. Um, but I don't want you to reinvent the wheel if, you know, he has something that you could work off of. Anyone else? I, I do wanna say one quick thing, that, you know, getting out of central office is something that, um, seemed like an impossibility a while ago. And, uh, the fact that I walked in there the other day and, um, there were cardboard moving boxes out of there and the fact that we're gonna be saving twenty-four thousand a month? Well, it's gonna be about three hundred thousand dollars a year with rent and utilities and that's on a conservative side. So we're listening to what folks are saying and we're, we're taking action that way. So I just wanted to make sure folks knew the dollar amounts involved. And central office will be located at, at the middle school.
Also, um, Mr. Vice President, uh, there was also maintenance costs in that building for water damage and other, other things that we had to pay for. So we're looking at substantial savings getting out of that building, you know? And, and I wanna applaud Mr. Remy, uh, Ms. Glassman, uh, and, and the superintendent on, on handling the movement as quickly as. and the superintendent on handling the movement as quickly as possible, and, you know, I think it shows that this board is looking at every way to save money possible. We are in a financial stretch, so, you know, whatever we can save that we can put back into the district, so I applaud Mr. Remy, and this Vice President, and this superintendent for making these moves, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, before we get to the agenda, I just wanted to say something about Saturday, somebody mentioned about the Homeowner Association meeting, I think it was Eugene, I want to thank everybody that came out to that. It was, it was a pretty well-attended Homeowner Association meeting, and for the first time, we didn't have it at the library, we actually had it in our house, we had it at the high school. And Mr. Jabino, you gave a great presentation, like kudos to you, I think a lot of people, I was just getting positive feedback from folks about it, which was great. And then afterwards, after we took some questions, myself, Ms. Glassman, and Mrs. Ricks, we took the remaining folks on a tour of the high school, and they didn't know about the Hall of Fame that we have there and all the famous, successful people that have graduated from Asbury High, congressmen, mayors, Leon Hess, the founder of Hess, you know, Hess Oil. So it was fantastic to see all these folks, and I think ninety-five percent of them didn't have kids in the school district, they're just homeowners, and they couldn't believe it. And we took them into the STEM lab, we took them into the medical arts kind of room, and now remember, school's done, teachers have taken everything off the, you know, off the, you know, in the classroom, everything off the walls and everything, so they're literally staring at empty classrooms, but they're still amazed that all of this stuff is in the high school. We took them to, we went to the music room, right, went to the music room as well, and then took them out to the fields to show them also that the gates are in fact open in the fields, and we really had good discussions with people about what the charter schools are doing, why we're not, you know, we're not gonna vote to pay them a cent until they can verify our students. And folks really, it was the first time, at least in my opinion, that folks really started to get it in terms of what we're facing as a district and how this is an all-in approach that, it's all hands on deck, folks, and we all need to be aligned in the same direction. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Jabino, I want to thank everybody that came, I want to thank Mrs. Ricks and Ms. Glassman for coming there and hoping that there's more, more opportunities to put our best foot forward, so. So just because I know that there's a few folks waiting in terms of other items on the agenda, I'd like to, I'd like to vote on the entire agenda except for B eleven-one, and so if we could do that, Ivy.
Are we by the entire, the entire agenda altogether?
Yeah, let's, let's vote on the, right, the entire agenda, but first B, then C, and then we'll go into executive session and we'll come back, we'll come back out to vote on B eleven-one. Sound good for everybody?
So you're not doing a consent agenda, you're doing page by page?
Yeah, just section by section, right. Consent agenda on B. So the first section we have is B one through, B eleven to B.
I forgot the minutes of the minute.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry about that. Ivy, can we go through A, B, and C?
Need a motion for the acceptance of minutes A two, item thirteen A through E.
Move it, second. Discussion?
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Losinski?
Uh, no.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I am staying on A, B, C, D, and E of the minutes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you want to, the, where is it?
B ten twenty-two.
B ten twenty-two. So I'd like to make a motion for the entire B session except for B eleven-one, we can take that out from now until after executive session.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I had a couple of questions. On B one, two B, I thought this was a stipend position, it's, looks like a administrative position now, is that true? Has the job description changed?
Yes, the job description was changed, the last month and the month before, and it's not administrative, he's a teacher slash athletic coordinator, so he'll be teaching classes and doing athletics.
It's not affiliated with the Teachers Union?
It'll be unaffiliated.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It'll be unaffiliated.
I had a couple more questions, I'm giving me a second. Before the O, that's a, that's a credit recovery, as in the teachers are gonna be teaching the courses to make up the credits, just wanted to understand because I didn't get any minutes from CNI, so I.
Yeah, that's a program we have every, every summer, the credit recovery program.
Is it with, is it with the teachers are teaching the course?
Yes, okay, yes.
The other question I have, B seven, number nine, new job creations, revisiting of the teaching math science supervisor, I just got the job description because we didn't get attachments the other day, and it doesn't have a certification in biological science or, and biological science can teach math, but it doesn't say that the person that is hired in that position has to have a cert in the description.
First of all, I changed the description because there was a mistake last time, but you don't need the, that certification.
You don't need a certification in biological science to supervise?
No.
I have a cert in K to twelve biological science and it's a specialty certification from the state as a teacher, anybody who has it knows it just like any other certificate you get in specialized instruction. I don't understand how a supervisor would be able to supervise science and math if you don't have those certs, that cert to do so.
Supervisor was a supervisor, a teacher would need a certification to teach a class.
We also should be certified to know what the curriculum is, what the standards are, how to teach the standards, what's required. I'm concerned with that, I wish, I think maybe we should revisit that. The other question I have is creation of a human resource manager, we just eliminated the human resources director and we're adding a manager, and we've already given another staff member additional duties, I was just wondering, why were we creating another position in Central Office? There's several that have been created this election.
We got rid of a director and a director's salary, this would be a manager and it would not be a supervisor, and they'll be covering the HR position.
As an abolished position, if the job description isn't correct, the individual that was let go would have first dibs back, I don't know if it's been reviewed by the attorney, the labor attorney to make sure that there isn't any backlash from creating the position.
Yes, I already checked into that, to make sure it's clean.
So I'm not quite sure what the savings are, that's just a comment. On B nine, number seventeen, T Trock, I don't know why it says the cost not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars, I know that the Springsteen Archives donates six thousand dollars for the program, and I know that last year there was some kind of confusion and the resolution was rewritten to read at no cost to the district. So I, I think there might, should be some adjustment there because it doesn't cost our district any money. The T Trock sends a voucher to the Springsteen Archives for all the costs of the program. That's on B nine. I don't know if you want to revisit that because it is for next year, maybe go back and have it updated so that we can vote on it, because I know it's an important program.
I remember when we, we took it back and we said, let's make sure it says at no cost to the district. There is a cost this year?
May I?
I'm sorry, what did he say? There's a cost to the district this year?
Yes, moving forward, there is a cost this year. I'm gonna have to get Mr. Ruiz to give you the full.
I had a conversation with the person that is in charge of the program and they said there's no cost to the district that they get billed from T Trock for the programs.
We can discuss this, if you want to remove, we can discuss it, Mr. Ruiz, but I believe there is this year a nominal cost to the district.
Okay. Can we just revisit it and just make sure, have it maybe tabled, remove it from the agenda and just make sure that it's correct for the next, I mean, it's not until September, it's for the high school, right?
Yes, it's been moved up to the high school, but we can table it.
Just before you table.
May I make a comment, please, as President or Chairperson of CNI Committee when we brought this, it is absolutely free to the district, absolutely, and still is free to the district. We checked, there should be no cost because it's through the Bruce Springsteen Archives. Given this to our district, absolutely free, it doesn't cost us any money, I'm not sure what the seven thousand five hundred dollars would be used for if the grant is free to us.
If I could make a suggestion, only because I'm not sure what pre-planning needs to be done for this program, I know it's starting in September, but to the extent that anyone would like to amend this motion to have, instead of the not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars, if you want, you could amend it to say at no cost to the district, vote on it, that way we can tell T Trock that we are on board and we'll be able to sort out for next month whatever the cost is, if any, and at the same time, we will not have delayed the implementation of the program to the extent that it might get delayed if you don't do anything tonight.
There is no cost to the district, the person, Ali Chapman, who brought this program to the district, was spoken to, there is no cost. That's why I was asking if you could break down how we got to the cost of seven thousand five hundred dollars, what does that cover, especially since the person who brought the program said there is absolutely, absolutely no cost to the district.
And Ms. Ricks, to your point, I'm suggesting that you, that we amend the motion to have a zero-dollar amount in it for the one that's approved tonight, and then we can at least let T Trock know that we're on board for September, and to the extent they come back to us and say there's a price, then we'll talk about it, but for now, for tonight, you can amend the motion to make it a zero-dollar authorization.
But I have a question, if some of us are willing to vote for it at a cost, your motion would otherwise limit it to approval only if there's no cost.
Correct.
And I guess my question is simply because it was, there was a, it was free last year, are you absolutely certain that it doesn't have a cost for twenty-four, twenty-five?
This resolution mirrors the one that was first brought to us last year, that's why. But I agree with Mr. Weiss, if we say we're gonna go with the program and there's a change, we can always change it next board meeting if there's a cost that has to be added.
So it doesn't impede, it doesn't impede T Trock if they have to do any prep for it, so I made the motion, so I'll.
I'm honest to you, just so you know, last year it was no cost to the district, this year we had to put it out and get quotes for this, for a program like this. We had quotes put out, so we have programs similar to this that could come in, so we did have to, it does accrue a cost this year, last year it was free to the district. Now actually, I remember sitting, I remember sitting at MLK, speaking to someone, they said, listen, just, you know, you hope we can find us some money because we want to come back here.
I'm not sure who you were speaking to because the person that brought the program says absolutely no cost, so I have no idea who you are negotiating the cost with. Now if there is some confusion, I suggest you speak to Councilwoman Ivan, Ali Chapman because she's the one that brought the program and made sure that there was no cost to the district. We had the same confusion last year, I think last year they were trying to do it for five thousand, and once we, someone spoke directly to Ms. Chapman, then that was removed from the agenda because she says there is no cost to the district. So she's the one to speak to, I have no idea.
She's, she's in charge of the Bruce Springsteen Archives.
Yeah, I have no idea who you're speaking to.
The charge is coming.
Ali Chapman is the person that we need to have this discussion with.
It is no cost to the district, they are, the charge that you see on here is utilizing the rest of our ESER funds for socio-emotional learning, and it's gonna cover the programs and materials to continue the program.
So these are, these are the federal ESER funds.
But how do you recommend?
How are you working, to T Trock, I don't understand.
The administrative assistance that she has, the documents that she can provide as to what the cost is gonna be for next year, so.
Is it pop, but can we, can we just do what Mr. Weiss suggested and then we can have a discussion about it and just make sure we, because it might be two different resolutions, not T Trock.
Yes.
Last thing we want to do is impede this, this program from happening, so.
Mr. Grillo, if I may interject, when I reviewed the agenda, when I saw there was a cost for T Trock because of federal funds, I specifically asked if quotations were received from any other companies that provide this service, the answer was yes, so there's definitely a cost to this program for the coming school year. Whether it was free last year, if there's a cost this year.
I don't know who you are talking to, who you are negotiating with, but I can assure you, the person who brought the program said there is no cost this year, and that is Ali Chapman, and most of us board members know her, and she would not mislead us, especially since she brought the program to her. Again, give me, tell me the person that you negotiated with, so maybe I could speak to her about that person.
So it's from, it's from the ESER funds, that's where it's coming, it's not coming out of our pocket.
I'm not talking about where it's from, I'm talking about why are we being charged for a free program.
Well, what they did is they included in the resolution some.
The program, the program was never free, there was a grant from the Springsteen Archives to pay the cost of the program last year. There was a discussion, and there was a discussion that day of the kickoff of this program, that there were sufficient ESER funds to be able to pay for it next year, which means this forthcoming year.
That's news to me, that's news to me, and I've just recently spoke to Ms. Chapman.
We can get all straightened out, I mean, it'll take one more month, I mean, they can move forward and then we can figure out what the other funds are for.
Can we, can we amend, I mean?
It was already amended to at no cost to the district and then go back and have to, if we have to go back and add it in another resolution, it wouldn't be no, any problem.
Yeah, so let's, let's just do this so we can move on.
I just, yeah, I just had, I just had one other question, on the addendum, B eleven, number B, two B, that specific title was abolished, has that individual been asked to return as a reason that they left the district? Was it last year, last year?
It was the, I'm sorry to interject, it was the district community, that one was abolished, this is the one that's funded through the Early Childhood Fund, so she will be working, even though it says district-wide.
But it says district-wide, that's my concern is.
Why that's there, but she's a hundred percent being funded by the Early Childhood Department.
But if it's district-wide, that's the, that's the position that she had, that might be an issue.
I wasn't aware of it. I wasn't aware of B11 2B.
Uh, B11 2B. It looks like it's for next year and somewhat, somewhat during the summer, but maybe you can revisit it and, just to make sure.
Just real quick, it's, it's part of the code, early childhood code that we need the parent specialist. That's part of code, state code for early childhood, so that that position is needed. And it's paid at early childhood, but it's used throughout the district because it's helping families throughout the district. But it is part of state code.
But you're replacing somebody who was removed from that position because of the abolishment of the job.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Microphone.
The, the, uh, what is it? B7 number nine, the human resources manager. Mr. Gervino, can you tell us what the difference in salary are from a director to a manager?
It's gonna be about $50,000 to $60,000 difference.
And the additional salary for the HR coordinator that was created, what was that extra money? You'd have to add that in.
That was an HR director.
Wasn't there another position, HR coordinator? Or am I...
No, there is.
Do the staff members have that now?
This is what, no, we don't have HR coordinator.
Anyone else?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I need to go back to the T-Trock program. It says, the resolution says up to $7,500. It could be zero. I, I think we should vote on the resolution as it is. If you don't want the program at any cost, then you can vote no. There are ESSR funds that are available and they're going to expire. If, if there is a grant available from the Springsteen Archives, great, we'll take advantage of it. I would personally hate to see us lose this program.
I have a question. If we table it, is it a possibility of losing it to figure out about the cost?
We have to allocate resources.
Because it's not till...
The, the problem is, you know, and look, I don't profess to know T-Trock's schedule or planning scenarios or anything like that, but I would imagine that they're taking the time over the summer to take stock of the number of students that they have so that they can plan, you know, to, to deliver the program. And just because we're kind of flying blind right now and not knowing when they do that, I would be concerned that our not taking, our inaction tonight may result in us not having the program here. But again, we don't know what the planning phase is that T-Trock is in.
That's why if we do no cost to the district, we can update it next month. It's not gonna cause a problem. I mean, if, if...
That was my question.
And right now, if it's combined with ESSR funds, as I know, ESSR funds are running out. We have to associate...
We have to use them.
We have to associate costs with these funds, or we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to lose it.
Well, confusion. If you're not making an informed decision, then we're just...
No, no, no. Right now, I'm saying, we have to subsidize and get, keep those funds. So, no, we're gonna find out if we, you know, I don't mind amending it to no cost for the child rock, but we need to go forward because we don't want to put associated funds because we, we put down the, the actual program. We voted down.
No, not, yeah, I don't want to vote the program down at no cost to the district and then revisit it if there's some other cost that we need to, yeah, that's what I thought we kind of were talking about.
Ms. Glassman, would you have a problem with that?
I do.
Because there's a possibility...
I think that there, that there is potentially a time constraint. And when you say up to, it includes zero. And we still have the discretion within that range to choose not to do it at the end of the day, if, if you don't want to. But I think we run the risk of losing, losing our place. And we know that we have the ESSR funds available, so the net result to the district is going to be zero.
But the ESSR funds aren't part of T-Trock. You... Yeah, the free program, yeah.
If we have $700, um, yeah, $7,500, why are we throwing it at a free program? Well, we could take that $7,500 and attach it to another program to enhance because we have several programs that need to be enhanced. So why would we just want to throw, just because we have the money, to throw the money towards a free program, a grant program that was brought to us? So that's, that's my confusion here.
If our administration had said that there is a cost to this, regardless of the fact that there was a grant last year.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please? And leave it, leave it as is. And if people don't want it, then they, they don't want it. But please, can we get a clarification? Because if, if it's wrong in here and it really is no cost to the district, then we're gonna have to, you know, either call a special meeting or wait until July to, to fix it, you know?
But up to, I don't see how it's wrong, Joe. Up to $7,500 includes zero.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying. Let's just vote on it as, as is. And if we see that there's a mistake, we'll, we'll, we'll correct the mistake and vote on it next, next meeting. Let's just leave it as is and move on. Okay. Roll call. Nope, there's more? Oh, absolutely. Microphone, Ms. Ricks.
A couple of months ago, we were talking about we were administrative heavy. And I think it was five to seven administrative positions were abolished. And everybody was happy about that. But since that time, we've changed titles and added so many other positions that, correct me if I'm wrong, seem to be administrative positions. Like, say, for instance, the human resource manager and the teaching math science supervisor on this agenda. And then on last month's agenda, there was four or five other positions. So we might have gotten rid of administrative positions during the month of February, March. But in April, May, and June, we continued to add administrative positions, just a different title.
Okay, so yes, we, we cut administrative positions to the fiscal responsibility. I saved, I, I cut over $1 million in administrative costs. The cost to the district now is about $265,000. So there's a huge difference in cost and I'm being financially responsible.
Well, I, and, and I do, I, I want to say that because I've looked at the budgets, uh, what is it? The, uh... No, no, no. The, the stroke budgets for other districts, the, the simple budget that comes out. If you look at them, we, we're the smallest district, and I've looked at quite a few of them. We've never had, I mean, other districts don't have, who have even more students than us, a HR director. They don't have a special education director. But by law, I believe we have to have a special education supervisor. There has to be somebody that oversees that. So when you switch from, and you have to look at cost, if I'm gonna go out and I'm just going to say, I'm gonna hire a supervisor, a special education director, I'm spending an excess $50,000, $60,000 for a position that I don't have to, and that is saving the district money. By state law, we don't have to, uh, uh, just to having a director. I'm, and, and this is, I can, I can actually pull up stuff four years ago and I can send it to anybody on this, on this board. I pulled up districts of our same size, and our administrative costs were astronomical. And we have positions that no one else of districts of the same size had. So it, it, these are things that we have to look at. But by law, also, we have to have a person in responsibility. And if we're not looking at a special education director, we do know we need, we have an allocation of, uh, a large special, and we need a special education supervisor. So we've saved $60,000 to $70,000.
Then you have a consultant also.
My concern is we bragged about, when I said we, I'm talking about the board in general, not necessarily me, but the board in general. We bragged about abolishing, getting rid of administrative position. My concern is, we did get rid of administrative position, but we brought a whole bunch back. We are still administrative heavy.
No, what else?
If you look at our agenda, a person sitting in the audience might not know, but if you look at our agenda and you see all these title changes and they are still administrative, we are just as administrative heavy as we started out. Now, these administrators, because you change a title, might not be making as much money as the ones that you get reduction in force or the abolishment. They might not be making as much, but we still have a heavy administrative load. That is my concern.
So right now...
I don't know how we are cutting back on top-heavy administrators if we continue to add administrators.
Because yes, right now, if we still have to have oversight of that area...
That's my concern. My, my, my discussion is what we say that.
Exactly. Right now, it's a...
At the time, we cut those positions, we knew we had to have somebody to oversee it. We knew that.
So yeah, so we did have cheaper costs. That, that doesn't matter.
But the, the problem was, we use the terminology administrative heavy, Charles.
So, so...
Are we still administrative heavy?
We, we are much better.
Well, no, no. No, because I still believe some positions did not come back.
Based upon the number of students we have.
Yes.
Last I counted, was around 1,400.
And, no, 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 no.
Administrative heavy, or student population of 1,400 students.
And that's what I'm saying to you. Yes, some, certain position, certain position.
Okay, so in my presentation, I said we were administrator fat. That's what I said. That we had a high cost of administrator salaries. Okay, we need a supervisor of special ed by law. We need a supervisor of early childhood by law. Okay, so yeah, I brought those positions back. There are staff members that are actually interviewed who are in district. So they're basically reassignments into positions that are administrative. So they're not, I'm not bringing people from outside. I'm not bringing a director, human resources. I'm not bringing a director of special ed services. So we're not, we do not have directors. We do have supervisors, but we need those supervisors in those positions.
And that's at a, at a...
At a system. Like I said, I think we saved over $1.2 million, and this is gonna cost about $265,000.
I'd, I'd like to see that broken down in some sort of chart because I, I, I agree, I kind of, I agree with Ms. Ricks. I'm not seeing that in the titles, maybe the salaries, but she's saying positions. Salaries are one thing. I mean, we've given money back to people. We've hired somebody back. We have two acting or an acting and a superintendent on administrative leave. We have a lot of positions. I don't, if, if there's been one eliminated, there's one or two being created to make up that difference. So I'd like to see where we stand right now because the board is so, a group of people here that said they were, wanted to reduce administrative costs, and part of that is reducing administrative positions.
Okay, um, we're, I'm gonna call this. All right, everyone's got, you know, said their opinion. It's time for a roll. If you don't like it, the, just vote no. Anyone?
I just don't think you should.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes, as to all of B.
Ms. Lysinski?
I'm gonna go through the agenda page by page because I marked some stuff, okay? So bear with me. I'm gonna vote no on 1A, 2A, and B.
What page?
On the first, B1. B2, yes. B3, yes. B4, yes. B5, yes. B6, four, no. B7, um, I'm gonna vote, remember, uh, so B7, B7 number five, I'm just gonna vote no on E and F to go along with my first vote on page one. B7, I didn't, I didn't get the attachments till today, so number seven, I'm gonna abstain. I'm gonna vote no on B7, 9, 8, and B. Yes on B8. I'm going reluctantly on B9. I would vote yes if it was no cost to the district, but that's not how it's written. So I'm going to abstain from that one. B10, uh, yes. And then on the addendum, B11, uh, yes on 2A and no on B.
Got that, Ivy?
I have no to B1, A, 2A, and B. Yes to B2.
Hold on a minute. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
No to B1, A, 2A, and B.
Yes.
Yes to B2, yes to B3, yes to B4, yes to B5. No to B6, number 4. Correct, B7, number 5, no. Something about E and F?
Uh, B7, number 5, V and F, no.
B7, abstain. B8, yes. B9?
No.
No?
Uh, B7, I'm sorry, B7.
Oh, B7, A, you abstain. 9A and B?
Uh, 9A and B, I'm going to vote no on B7.
B7, A?
B7.
Is there a B7, A? Or you abstaining for B7?
Uh, B7, I didn't get the attachment, so I'm staying.
Okay, correct. B8Y, yes. Correct, B9 abstain. B10, yes. B11, yes. To 2A, no to B. Correct.
Dr. Maksut? I have a question for B7, 9A, for science supervisor. The credential of the supervisor, is it a teaching license? Is it a...
A supervisor's cert.
Supervisor certification in science. So what type of training they have in science to supervise?
Right now, just so you know, all the supervisors that we have now...
Yeah.
Are curriculum instruction CNI, that's it. That they can be moved anywhere within that, because a supervisor is a supervisor. It's not about the content necessarily, it's about providing them with the professional development and providing them with any assistance they need with the supervisor. So you don't need a supervisor's cert. Uh, you only need a supervisor's cert.
Like attendance or like, nothing science-related?
Yeah, it's science-related, but a supervisor is a supervisor. So I could, if you have a supervisor's cert, I can put you in any position that is needed. That's how that works.
Okay, then, um, yes to all. Yes to the whole, yes, emotional, yes. Dr. Penna?
Dr. Penna, you still there?
I can come back to him. Uh, Mr. Remy?
Any here?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes, everything is, uh, B6, four. B6, what? Mr. Remy, B6, what?
Four.
Four, thank you.
Ms. Ricks?
I have a long list here, so bear with me. I am abstaining from 1A, page B1. Abstaining from 2A, B1. Abstaining from 2B, B1. Abstaining from number 2 on B4. Abstaining from DEF on B5. I'm voting no on 9A and B. I am abstaining from, that's it. And I am abstaining and recusing myself that... And I am abstaining and recusing myself that has anything to do with awards. That's W-A-R-D-S, be it Ward or Jones Ward. I'm recusing myself from that.
Everything else is a yes? You have a no for B1, A, two A-
Just give me a minute, give me a minute. Yes, go ahead.
Abstaining from B1, A, two A, B1, two B, B1, two, B4, A, D, F and B5. And you're saying no to nine A, B?
Yes, and recusing myself from anything related to Ward and Ward Jones, Jones Ward. Yes.
Ms. Brown, I have a question regarding B6, four. Someone, this relocation have, like, for example, Brian Hackett is from MLK to, oh, sorry. It's MLK to MLK or TMS to TMS. Like, are these typos? Like, where are they moving to? It's the same school. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, row six, um, school counselor position and elementary teacher.
It said it's a correction from last month's agenda. That's why I had to be put back on there. See the little asterisk at the bottom? Correction update from May twenty-third agenda.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
I'm, I'm also voting no on seventeen, Teach Rock, unless the adjustment is made.
Can you give me the page number and item?
That Teach Rock is, uh, number seventeen, page, I'm sorry, B9. Yes, number seventeen, page B9.
Thank you.
I'm voting no on that unless adjustments are made.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, on everything except for abstain from B6, number four.
B6, number four, abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes to everything.
Thank you.
All right, um, section C. Can we get Ivy? Okay. We have to tally up a little. Okay, Ivy, where are we at? You still calculating? Okay.
Could I have, uh, everybody's attention, please? Item four on page B6, the vote was four in favor, three against and one abstention. In order to pass, it needed the majority of those present at the meeting.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little louder and I didn't hear what you said?
Okay. Item number four on page B6 had four in favor, three against, one abstention. It needed a majority of those present to pass, so the motion failed. Because the, because of the, the transfers being needed for the opening of the school year, otherwise it would be chaos because of the teaching. I'm going to override the Board of Education on this matter and approve item number four, two, twenty-four, twenty-five, school year's staff assignments and transfers. And in fact, some of these are corrections from prior board meetings, in fact, so they did pass at a prior board meeting, the ones that have the asterisks. So I am overriding the Board of Education on this matter and approving this item.
Thank you. Did everything else pass? Okay.
Yes.
Jesse has a-
Yeah, Jesse has, cheers to-
On item, on page B11, item D, I would like clarity on this, because you're, have, and she's replacing Lezera Boston. And Lezera Boston-
She was non-renewed.
Did not resign, nor was she fired. Her position was abolished.
No, she was not.
So unless I can get clarity-
No, she was non-renewed. She was non-renewed.
Oh, who's, who decided that?
She was non-renewed before the previous superintendent actually decided that.
I'm, I'm gonna change my vote to no. That's B11, page B.
Ms. Ricks, is it B11, item two B?
Item two B, yes.
Thank you. So she changed her vote. Uh, does that affect-
No.
Mrs. Ricks, um, your vote has been changed, uh, and Ms. Brown indicated that, that, uh, action item still passes. Uh, your change in vote was noted. Uh, Ms. Brown recorded that, uh, change of vote, uh, and despite your change of vote, uh, the action still passes on B11, two B. Business section, section C. Okay. So this is the one that ha, that also has all the facility fee waiver requests. Um, I just want to remind folks that, uh, the city is considered a level, what, what is it? A level, um-
Level one.
Level one, level A, level one, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of use. Um, and we did, you know, speak, uh, pretty adamantly about, uh, not waiving fees on some of the other, other organizations that are not either, um, or that are not, uh, level one or school. So with that. I want to make a motion for consent, consent agenda of all section C, C1 to C17.
A second?
Questions or comments? Yes, if I may, board members, um, please take note that item C6, uh, item E is a request for waiver of fees for religious organization. There's a New Jersey Supreme Court case, I believe it's Resnick versus East Brunswick, that says that a public body like a school district must charge religious organizations for any out-of-pocket costs that the district may have, including, but not limited to, utilities, heat, janitorial services, et cetera. Um, and the reason why the New Jersey Supreme Court held that is because under the Establishment Clause of the Constitution, um, state agencies and governments cannot, um, advocate or support religious organizations. And the, the Supreme Court in New Jersey determined that a waiver of fees for a religious organization is essentially the same as, uh, a donation, if you will, uh, to the religious organization. And so we're not allowed to waive fees for a religious organization.
One other question, uh, Jill, you said, I understand the school, I understand the school district, but what about the mayor's relevant committee?
That's a city committee.
Yeah, it's a city, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I have a question.
Yes.
Of course I do. I do want to say that, um, I got the update on the amount of money that we received for the forty percent, um, from the cuts. And I appreciate the attention legislators are giving to our district. Um, not that they have ignored us before, but, um, we do need a little bit more help. Uh, I want to know, um, what the board and the administration are going to be doing going forward budgetatively and programmatically so that we can plan for the future, because I haven't heard any plans. I know we've spoken about it over the years, but never saw anything, so I didn't know if there was something in progress. Because I don't, I'm not involved in any of the communications, so that's just, that's just one comment, just to-
Not to complain, I can answer some of that, if that's okay. Just because, um, so it's, now that budget season is, is kind of almost done, hopefully this, hopefully Friday, um, this gives us, uh, a year to advocate for the change in school funding. It's something that the legislators, um, have now taken seriously. Unfortunately, it took the suburbs to start complaining for them to pay attention. Um, luckily, we've got really, uh, great legislators that, uh, have been wanting to get some space in terms of time to, uh, to get to work on, on this. Because, uh, as it stands right now, the formula is obviously flawed and, um, where it was supposed to save Asbury, uh, districts like Asbury Park, it's hurt us tremendously. So, um, at least from, from my point of view and from what, um, I've heard from Senator and the Assemblywoman and their staff, um, uh, this will, the big kind of enchilada this ye, this year is going to be this, the, the funding formula, the state funding formula. I'm really hoping that they get to work on it right away, rest for one day and get back to work on, on, on this. Because I know this budget is really tough on them, so, uh, on all the legislators, so.
All right, I did have a question on, uh, C4, nine, A, the pupil placements, but not so much C4, but C5. I see we have a lot of, um, vocational placements this year. And, um, as I looked over it, it's over, it's probably over twenty. The one que, I have two, one question and one statement. Um, there's several academy charter school students that are going for, I don't know if it's full day or half day. Is this going to be prorated? Because we're, funds are coming out of our district for the full day at a charter school. Has anybody looked into whether those children are, does the cost of those, that tuition will be prorated? Because they are going to be going either part-time or full-time to vocational school? That's the question. I mean, that's something to, something to look into if indeed that's something that would be considered.
You could, the dollar amount is like thirteen hundred for the whole year, because it is a half-day program.
Yeah, but we're, we're paying full tuition to the charter school for that student. If they're going to, I don't know what the difference is, is there any, anybody thought about prorating because they're now going to the vocational school?
To answer your question, like-
Yes, certainly. I believe that all part-to-half-day vocational school students are treated as shared-time students. So the charter school, when they submit their, uh, ASSA, will be on there as a shared-time student, not a full-time student. So they will be receiving half, half tuition, because they'll only be attending the charter school half the day. And then the district pays the vocational school through the other half.
Uh, while you're, while you're discussing that, on page C5, that entire list of, uh, Monmouth County Vocational School Year, those are duplicate students. They're already, you're already on page C4, so it's not as many as, as you think that are going out.
Um, the other question I had, um, with, you know, careers are very important here in, um, our city for the children. Not everybody's college, and that's with a lot of students. Not everybody's college-ready. And we eliminated two of the programs we had here, the, um, cosmetology program. We had a pretty large class of students and then, uh, allied health, which was very popular. Um, I see that, well, of course vocational schools only have limited amount of seats. So you only have three students that took cosmetology this year that are going to a vocational school. So I know as a district, we're trying to increase enrollment by enticing students here, by eliminating two programs that brought students here. We still have the, um, Dream Academy, which brings students in from even the charter schools, but we lost two magnets that could bring students in. I, I kind of see this as, uh, um, the opposite of what our goal is to bring students here by sending them out to vocational schools, which only have limited seating. And there's only a, a certain amount of kids that would ever be able to go there. So that was just a comment on that.
Okay, um, roll call?
Ms. Glassman? One other comment?
Just, no, I'm sorry.
No, this isn't, wait, wait, you can't-
I just said roll call, and now she's about to say-
Well, I, you didn't ask me if anybody else had any questions?
I did, I did.
I have one more question. Go ahead. Just give me a sec.
Go ahead.
I know you don't like my questions, but I have-
No, I love questions. Just, you know, I want to keep it going here.
Oh, I'm not in charge. There's another, okay, now I'm lost my spot. There's another, um, agenda item on the business agenda for an accountant. We've had an accountant, we paid accountant, what is it, twenty thousand dollars a year, every year, because, um, we don't have accounting, somebody who has accounting background in the business office since, what's the gentleman's name left? So we've been hiring an accountant every year. You're going to, as I see the budget, hire an assistant business administrator, which we do need help in the business office, no doubt. Could you rewrite the job description for an assistant business administrator to make sure they have accounting experience and save the twenty thousand dollars for an accountant that we hire outside the district? I thought that was a constructive, um, question and suggestion, and I wanted to make sure I made it during the meeting. I'm sorry, I held everybody up. I'm not sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
To, to answer your question, Barbara?
Yes.
To answer your question, I plan to review the job description for the assistant business administrator-
Thank you.
Before it goes out to make sure it includes everything that's necessary. I would not like to have, and not, not to have anything against the firm, we've, I've used that firm in other districts, but, uh, there's a, I really don't, if we have the right people, we will not need-
Yeah, accounting is very important, you know, in the job and paying somebody, when we had-
When we had somebody years ago, we eliminated that position because of budget cuts, but it's important having some accounting.
But I will review that and make sure that it includes experience in accounting.
All right, anyone else? Last chance. Roll call, please.
Consent agenda, Ms. Glassman?
Yes, except for the following. On C2, number four, if it's possible, I would like to pull out and say no to the transfer of any funds to College Achieve. Then, as to C6, number 12, C6A is no.
C6A?
C7, B, C, D is yes. E is no. F, I need to abstain. G is yes. And on C16, number 42, no.
So, I have C2, number four, no if it's related to caps. C6A, no. C7, you have a yes to B, C, D, no to E, no to F, and yes to G.
I have to abstain on F. So, yeah, right, except for F, is it abstain? And G is yes.
And C16, 42, no.
16, 42, right, yeah, is no, thank you. It is 16, no?
C16, number 42, no.
Yes, I mean, that's correct. Ms. Lesenski?
Give me a second. It's hard when I don't have the papers. I'm filing, and I'm going through an iPad. C1, yes, except for... Where are the bills and claims there? No, except for the bills of any students that haven't been verified with College Achieve. C3, yes, except, number seven, no. C4, yes. C5, yes. C6, abstain on number 11. I didn't see the attachments until tonight. Number 12, A, the youth baseball, no, for the wave of fees. B, yes, C, yes, D, yes. No on E. F, yes, G, yes.
I'm sorry, repeat the...
C7, I'm voting no on the fee waiver for the baseball and the church.
I think that's C6, I'm drawing a paper.
The paper is different than the one...
Yeah.
All right. Number 12, the fee waiver for the youth baseball, no. The cities, yes. The church, no. Yes on the School Alliance Fund, since I don't have the numbers right here. Yes on the grant funds. The MOU with Bobby Ashley, abstain, because I don't know what that is. The Genesis SIS, support, no. We have a data manager, so I'm voting no. Professional Service Awards, yes on everything. Abstain for the Board Attorney. Everything bids, yes. Capital reserves, everything else after that. Tax annuity, the accounting services, I'm going to vote no because of my comment. Curriculum, yes. Public documents, yes. The Emergency Management Plan, I did not see it. I didn't see an updated copy. I'm going to abstain from that. Guess... I guess everything else, I'll vote yes on. I didn't want to hold everybody up. I'm going to vote no on the substandard facilities renewed. I believe we should get rid of those trailers. And that's it. Anything else, yes, if that makes sense.
No?
No?
Because it didn't help that you didn't give me the page numbers and stuff?
Yeah, it didn't get updated in the... In my iPad, so I just got it tonight, so...
Is it possible to look at the paper copy and just...
I have it here.
Because I have C1, yes, except for anything related to College Achieve.
Correct.
On C3, you say yes, except for seven, you saying no. Page C3.
C3?
Yes, except for seven.
Yes, no, yes, for C3, C4 is yes.
C5, yes.
C5, yes.
C6, you abstaining from number 11A?
10A. 10A on C6 and...
12 abstain.
Number E, I guess it is, the church.
What's number 12A? Is there 12A on C6?
Oh, no, it's... It must have been, it's 11 now. The new agenda, it's 11A and 11E. C7. Okay, you ready?
Wait, C6A, 10A, E? 10A. You abstaining from 10A. Yes to B, yes to C, yes to D.
10A is a no, yes to B, C, D. E is a no, F is a yes.
Thank you.
C7, when you're ready?
Yes.
G is a yes. Insurance Fund, number 11, is a yes. 12 is a yes. 13 abstain.
14, no.
14, no.
15, yes.
15, A, yes. B, yes, abstain on C. D, yes. 16, yes.
B?
16A and B, yes. 9, C, yes. D, yes. Looks like everything else, everything is.
So, C9, yes.
Yeah, 10 is... Yep. 11, yep, yes. 12, yes. 13, yes. 14, yes. Oh, no on the trailers, number 35.
Okay, I have that.
You got that, and then everything else you got?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Maksut? Yes to everything?
No.
Oh. I wish.
No to C2, 5?
C2?
Consultative Director Agreement? No to 16, 42? Those charges. And no to C6, 10A? 10B? And abstain on C6, 10D?
Yes to everything except for C2, number 5, C6, number 10A, 10B, no, and no to C16, number 42, and you abstain from C6, number 10D?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Penn?
Yes. Okay. No to C2, number 4, anything related with college achievement. C6, 10A, no. 10B, no. And no on C16, number 42. Yes, yes.
No to C2, 4, related to caps. No to C6, 10A, 10B, and no to C16, number 42.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Remy?
No to C1, 4, C2, 5, C6, 10A, and E.
E or B?
E.
Okay.
And 6, 16, 42. Yes to everything else. Quick, simple, easy.
No to C1, 4, C2, 5, C6, 10A, and E, and C16, number 42.
Correct.
Ms. Ricks? Mike, please.
I abstain from C1, A, B, C, D. Abstain, C1, Item 2, abstain, C1, Item 3, abstain, C1, Item 4. Voting no on C2, number 5. Abstain from C3, Item 7A, and that continues from C3 to C4, C5.
Abstain?
Abstaining. I'm voting no on C2, number 5, and I might make a comment. We, the board, discussed earlier this year about not waiving facility fees. If we waived this facility fee, we would be waiving off about $40,000. So, that is my reason for voting no on that one.
What number is that? No to...
Oh, sorry. C2, number 5.
Okay.
C6, 10A, no.
Thank you.
C6, 10E, no. C7, 14, no. C8, 15, no. C10, 18, abstain. C10, 19, abstain. C12, 27, abstain. C14, Item 23, abstain. C15, Item 39, abstain. And... C11, number 25, abstain. And I recuse myself of anything that have to do with awards.
I lost a couple of your counts. Did you vote anything on C9?
Say that again.
Page C9.
No, I didn't.
Everything's yes?
I didn't do C9.
You were from... You start on C1?
Right. A, B, C, D.
C1, abstain from 2, 3, 4. No on C2, number 5.
Right.
You abstain from C3, 7A. And then you abstain all pages of C4, C5, and C6?
Yes, and not C6, C5.
Okay. You said no to C6, number 10A and B?
C6?
10A and B?
No.
Or A and E?
C2, C... Okay. C2, Item 5.
No, C6.
I didn't say anything about C6. Oh, yeah, I did, I'm sorry. A and E.
A and E?
That's a waiving of facility fees.
Ms. Ricks?
And no to C7, number 14 and 15.
Right.
And then no to C10, number 19?
Abstain from 18, 19, abstain. 27, abstain. 23, abstain. 39, abstain. And 25, abstain.
18, abstain.
Yes.
19, abstain?
Yes.
23?
33. 27, 33, 39, and C11, 25.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
C1, A, anything dealing with College Achieve, no. C6, 12A?
Can you speak up, I'm sorry?
C1, A, anything dealing with College Achieve, no. C6, 12A, no.
C6, 12?
Eight, yeah, no. C7, E, no. And C17, 44, no.
17, 44?
Yeah.
So, I have no, C1, A, related to caps, no. C6, 12A, no. C7, E, C17, 44.
Yes.
That number was changed. It's not the same. It's not the same.
It's an addition, right?
It's 42. 42?
42, okay.
So, it's C16, 42?
Yeah.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes on everything except any payment to College Achieve. I'm abstaining on any payment to JCPenel and New Jersey Natural Gas, though we may have to pay in bills, and no on C6, 10A, C6, 10E. That's it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, I just have one change. I... Because the page is being redone, if you're ready. Just one. I wanted to vote no on C2, number 5. I don't know if we... I missed that.
You want to vote no to C2, number 5?
Correct.
Thank you. Yes.
Today, we... We probably started to be repeated at any five, seven, ten, people start by zero. On C6, I want to vote yes. We think happy, no. On C6, 10E?
E as in Edward?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Maksut, did you mean 10B as in boy or 10E as in Edward?
Both, B and E, thank you.
No.
By the way, congratulations, we've outlasted Asbury Park reporter. He left.
He left.
Ms. Brown? Yes. May I please change my vote from C six, ten B to a yes? C six, ten B, you said yes, I'd like to say yes, yes, yeah.
Ms. Brown? Hold on, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that the num, since the numbers had changed in the print, I want to make sure that, that you had gotten it, what I intended. I think I kept saying it was number twelve, but it was number ten.
For you, I have yes to everything except C two, four.
Hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. C, right, two, number four.
Related to caps, C six, A, no. On C seven, yes to B, C, D, no to E, abstain from F, yes to G.
Thank you, that's right, that's all right, yep, thank you, sorry.
Ms. Ricks, did you vote on C sixteen, forty-two? C sixteen, number forty-two. You didn't abstain or say no or yes. But if you didn't, I don't want to assume it's a yes, but.
Ms. Ricks, that's the College Achieve payments.
The College Achieve payments?
Yeah. So that, that one didn't pass.
Folks, if we're gonna go into executive session, let's do it now while IV counts up the votes, we don't need to be waiting here to hear, Mr., Dr. Penna is about to lose all cell service. So I'd like for us to go in there, five minutes, and then come back out and vote, please. He's not going to be, no, he's not going to be in executive session. He's gonna wait for us, I'm gonna run a timer, five minutes, we're coming back out. Yes, please. Okay, so you're certainly welcome to stay. I'm, I'm, no. But you're certainly welcome to stay. Executive! Wait, why do you have to leave? Alright, so, let's go to executive session right now.
I did it.
Alright, second.
Who, uh, motioned it?
Uh, Mr. Rogers. I could do it. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park School Board wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be resolved that the Asbury Park School Board will hold closed executive session on this day, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, At Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken. So the board's gonna retire to closed session for five minutes to discuss the superintendent's contract. No action will be taken inside executive session. Um, action will be taken when the board returns from executive session back into public session, we'll be back in five minutes. Look at that. Okay, folks. Alright. Are we ready? Alright, uh, everyone is here, turn this stupid thing off. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the where is it again? The
It's B eleven, number one.
B eleven, B eleven, one, re-appointment of Mark Turbino's acting superintendent. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Is it a motion to approve the contract of the acting superintendent? Ms. Glassman?
Correct.
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
No.
Dr. Maksud? Yes. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Uh, sorry, Mr. Rogers?
I refuse myself.
Yes, I'm sorry, just happy. Mr. Grillo?
Yes. Mr. Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Sorry. Motion passed.
All that time, we almost forgot about Dr. Penna.
That's okay.
Alright, have a good dinner. Have a good dinner, Michael. Enjoy yourself. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you for your time. Bye.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, uh, everyone say aye, aye. Aye, go, adios.